Council for Tuesday, October 18th, 2016. Go ahead and call the meeting to order and ask for a roll call, please.
Councilmember Dornbecker?
Here.
Councilmember Durham?
Here.
Vice Mayor Muller?
Here.
Mayor Dunbar?
Here. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Next is adoption of our agenda for tonight. I don't know of any changes, so is there action for...
So moved.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Public comment. Now is the time for any member of the public to bring comments forward that are not on tonight's agenda. I know we do have a couple guests in the audience that would like to do that, so now would be the time. Welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the Yountville Town Council. My name's Jennifer Morse. I'm here with a few former members of the Yountville School Foundation, and we're here to talk about Yountville Elementary School for a minute. So we've come to ask you, as a town council, to help in any way possible ensure that the school doesn't close. As you may recall, our Yountville School Foundation formed a few years ago when the state was in a recession and funding was down and small elementary schools were being closed in the district, and there was a threat to Yountville Schools. So the foundation came together, made a contract with the district to make up the deficit that our school was running at, and we raised money and paid money to the district to keep the school open. We raised about $120,000 over the course of five years. We had a five-year contract, and district said they wouldn't close the school as long as we kept that up. We made our last payment in January of this year, and things were looking good at that time. So the district representatives thought at that time our five-year contract was up. There wasn't really a reason, it wasn't necessary to renew it at that time. And so we voted to dissolve the foundation, turn our 501(c)(3) status over for the formation of the Town of Yountville Community Foundation. And so now here we are again with threats to the school, and it sort of looks like we were maybe a little premature in folding up the foundation. But we're hoping, obviously, that things are going to go well and that we're going to keep the school open. So it looks today, it looks like in today's news that perhaps Stonebridge isn't coming to Yountville after all, but still the future of Yountville Schools is unclear. So the district maybe isn't sticking true to what it said to us earlier. We, so we're here again to ask for your support for the school. We know that it's not within the town's power to keep the district from doing what it wants to do necessarily, but we understand that that land is zoned for public facilities, public institutions. We hope that the town can at least make it known to the district that that might make it very hard for anything, you know, anything else to exist there. You know, we're afraid that they're going to want to sell off land of closed schools like they've done with some of the other schools that they've closed to raise money. So we're hoping that, you know, you could do everything in your power, including letting the district know that it won't be easy to do something else with that land besides a school or some other public facility, and, you know, maybe take an extra look at the zoning laws, make sure there aren't loopholes that might allow development or lease for something other than public use. I had a nice statement prepared that I didn't really read thoroughly, but I hope I've covered everything, and thank you for listening.
Thank you. And because it's public comment, we're not able to really get into any detailed response, but if there are any other members that would like to address this particular issue, and then I can give a little bit of clarifying information since I am on the advisory committee that's been working with the district. So did anyone else want to speak on this?
I would.
Okay. So let me just, and Gary, if I start going into too much detail during public comment, just interrupt me. The original revenues that were generated by the foundation that you referenced were meant to bridge the shortfall in the state funding that was, that existed for those several years that you talked about. So that was a different situation than the district's budget. That was state funding that wasn't coming from the state to the district. The community foundation can still operate in a similar role to the school foundation. It's the whole point of the community foundation being created and kind of consuming the Yountville School Foundation. So if there becomes a need to generate local revenue to help fund the school, there is a mechanism that's going to be in place to do that. And it's not a done deal. We just had our latest committee meeting this morning, and I brought in the story from the Napa Register that said it's a done deal, at least in the headline. And just to clarify for folks listening, whatever recommendation that's ultimately presented by district staff, it goes to the Board of Trustees, and they make the final decision. So the decision has not been made officially. The board's going to receive the recommendation on November 3rd, and they have that meeting as well as November 17th meeting to make their ultimate decision. Next Tuesday, October 25th, there will be back-to-back public meetings, one held here in Yountville to focus on local parents, community members about Yountville Elementary in particular, but also the recommendation that will be crafted by then that's going to be presented to the board. Immediately following that meeting, the same district staff will be going down to Stonebridge Elementary and having a very similar meeting there to educate their stakeholders in the recommendation that's going to go from the district staff to the board. Your point is very well taken about one thing that this body does have an influence and control over would be local zoning laws, if it ever came to that. So as I walk the fine line now about getting into details, there's a lot more information that the committee has discussed. We have agreed that information will be sent out by the district public affairs person to be one coordinated voice. That can't stop the committee or anyone else from having friends, parents, and others speak to the media and speak to each other about what they think is happening. So some of what was reported is accurate, some of it is not accurate according to what the committee at least has been discussing. So that's about all I think I can get into. There will be more coming out, and certainly more on October 25th, which will be another opportunity for anyone that's interested to attend the meeting and share their thoughts, their questions. It will be a draft recommendation, which maybe, maybe can't be altered at that point, but at least we'll be aware of what's going to be presented to the board. You're certainly welcome to contact individual trustees, the superintendent, prior to the November 3rd meeting in case there are issues or concerns or comments that you want to share with them that would be considered by the board. So I think I'd better stop there. Just know that the entire council, our whole town staff, we're working diligently to support Yountville Elementary School. And just because you're not hearing all of the conversations doesn't mean that we're not actively involved in it. So like I said, there'll be more information that we'll be able to share very soon. And look forward in the Yountville Sun, because it'll be there. So, and thank you for coming and sharing your thoughts about that. Any other items that anyone would like to bring to the council that's not on our agenda? Okay, then let's get right back to that agenda. Next up is our consent calendar. We have one item to approve minutes from October 4th. Is there action on that item?
I make a motion to accept the consent calendar.
I second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That is unanimous. Let's move on to the first of two presentations. We are going to start with our Cal Fire Public Safety Quarterly Report. Welcome back.
Good to be back. Okay, county fire ran 428 calls in the last three months. 288 of those were medical aids, 27 public assists, 44 traffic collisions, two vehicle fires, 39 alarm soundings, nine structure fires, five vegetation fires, three miscellaneous fires, and 11 hazardous conditions. Of those calls, the town of Yountville was 79 of those. 203 of those calls were at a veterans' home. County areas, surrounding county areas, 141 calls and five assists to Napa City. Fortunately, not a lot of major events in the report this time. We had a small fire at the elementary school that they were able to confine to a duct and took care of that, and a traffic collision that shut down Solano for a little while. Patients were okay in the end. The movie in the park was a success again, and the 12 crew attended that. Public safety training, the Station 12 guys did CPR training, hands-only CPR, and some fire extinguisher training for some residents around here and built, or some businesses. And they're going to continue the hands-only CPR training as well. They took second place in Urban Shield. I don't know if you saw on the news the Urban Shield exercise in San Francisco. They were second only to Alameda that wins every year, and they're the hosting agency.
Nice.
So the guys did really well at that. We acquired a couple of structures. One, a house in Rutherford that was going to be demolished, and so we were able to do some live-fire training in there. Good opportunity when the crews can go in and actually do live-fire training and get a realistic scenario. And then the old Register building in downtown Napa, we did a lot of training on that, two or three weeks worth of training there. So the safety message for this month, October is Fire Prevention Month, and it's also time to check smoke detectors. Smoke detectors now are supposed to have a 10-year life. You're not supposed to have to change the battery in them, but if you still have the old battery type, switch that out to the new type, or at least get a battery changed, and practice escape drills and things like that in the home with the family. That's all.
Great. Thank you very much. We just assume not have any major reports necessary.
No, we had to dig for those right there.
Thank you. Okay, let's see what the Sheriff's Department has for us.
Are you guys going to click for me? Good evening. So we had a great quarter. Raise that up just a little bit so you can hear me. I'm just going to go through a few numbers for you. Maybe, maybe not. It's okay if you just go to the next slide.
Or do you have it memorized?
That's okay. Actually, you know what? I'll just talk without that. So, community activities, of course, in this last quarter, we had the Fourth of July celebration, and that was my first day here in the town of Yountville, so that was a great way to start things off.
I don't know which one it was.
Great time, and it was controlled chaos for about 40 minutes, but it was, everyone had a safe, good time. We participated recently in the Walk to End Alzheimer's. In fact, I saw you out there, Mayor, and several other people. That was, that was a good time for everybody. If you would, go ahead and switch me over to the next slide. Thank you. Our, I'm glad to say that our, any violent crimes in Yountville are down this quarter. We are down to just two simple assaults, which can literally be someone being shoved by someone else, as opposed to similar quarters, last quarter and then the same quarter last year. If you would click to the next slide for me. Again, our thefts are actually down. The only thing that kept us at an even level on thefts were low-value thefts or petty thefts. So we had more of those than normal, but overall, as far as, we only had one residential burglary or one burglary at all. So I'd like to think that that has to do with increased patrol and patrol checks on businesses and homes. If we can go to the next slide, please. Our calls for service were up a little bit from last quarter to 909 calls for service. And in looking at basically what we're doing with traffic and citations, we are fairly busy with that, but we're staying even with the numbers again throughout last year and then this last quarter. If you would, go to the next slide. Traffic stops for this quarter were, again, even with last quarter, about 106 traffic stops. We do, we did step up the patrol checks, which literally can mean us coming out. We'll check on your house, we'll go to your business, we try doors, we check in with business owners, just make sure things are going good, hopefully let everyone see us. If you would move to the next slide. This basically just shows that we're hopefully staying within that, the education in the spirit of Yountville where basically we stop people and we contact people, and we try to give warnings and educate them about our ordinances, our laws. And about one-third of the time, we do end up ending, we end up giving citations or having to do some other type of enforcement action, but it's normally about one-third of the time. So collisions this quarter? Collisions, I started to get a little bit nervous about, and I think it's because it was my first full quarter inside Yountville. I started to see them come up, and we did have half of our collisions involve injuries, thankfully minor injuries. So immediately, I started going out in the mornings early and having every one of my people working Yountville Crossroad, working surface streets, and working the highway. We were doing radar and LiDAR, which is focused laser radar, to try and slow people down. And I think it did a pretty good job, especially since we just had rain and had no accidents during that period. So again, through just talking to people and reminding them that getting there is more important than getting there one minute early. So if we, next slide, please. And that's it. I'm just going to go through a couple other things real quick. We, once in a while, we get calls for vehicles that people are concerned that they've been parked there for a long time, or people are putting recreational vehicles out on the street that shouldn't be. We had seven of those vehicles this quarter, and only one person had to be towed. Everyone else we were able to talk to and just explain to them why we're doing what we're doing, and they were happy to just remove the vehicles. And so we were able to work with them on getting that done. Kind of an update, we talked last time about using social media to educate cyclists coming through the town of Yountville to try and stop more frequently at the stop signs. We had numerous contacts. I didn't hear one complaint, which was a good sign, and one of the times I might have talked to a group that had a local judge in it. And everyone was very compliant, and since then I've noticed that they are trying, I mean, once in a while we see it, but they are trying to slow down. And they also educated me that when they have their feet clipped in, it is a little more difficult, but I just ask them, do your best to really slow down and look for pedestrians and cars, because ultimately it's about safety, theirs and ours. And that's what I have for you.
Great. Thank you very much.
Any questions, sir?
Appreciate it, Sergeant. And I know what you're talking about with those clips, sometimes they become treacherous also, and the concrete still hurts even when you're not moving very quickly. Let's move on to our public hearings. I know that's why the majority of the folks in the room are here. We're going to start off with our first one, Bellagio in Master Development Plan and Use Permit Amendments. I know that we're going to hear a staff report and then do a little computer transitioning, so let's start with that staff report.
All right. Good evening. Tonight you have before you the amendment to the Bellagio Master Development Plan, and it includes both design review and use permit elements. And the project site is just over seven acres, and it was approved in 1997 as the original master development plan. That approval includes 112 guest rooms, a conference center, a spa complex, and other facilities, as well as the 2.7-acre vineyard that's on the adjoining parcel, and that space counted as the site's open space. The application before you now is one of two applications submitted from the Vintage Estates Properties, and this one is for Bellagio. So the renovations to the lobby include a reconfiguration of the interior of the lobby for better use of the space, as well as some significant alterations. One is a new 906-square-foot open-air port-cochere that would be constructed of rough-sawn wood columns, and each would be separated from one another with space between. And the port-cochere would be unconditioned space that, sort of similar to a covered porch that offers an entryway to, to the main lobby area, which is conditioned space. This shows the photo simulation of it. I'll go to more of a simple elevation here. Another proposal is to remove 205 square feet of upstairs office space, and that results in the removal of one of the two dormers you see on the front elevation.
Actually, Senator, do you think you, we're not seeing any graphics.
Well, that's unfortunate, because...
We do have them in our packets.
Yes. Perhaps we should refer to that. It doesn't look like it's, here, go ahead, showing that. It's pulling up on my screen, but I don't see that on your screen. So I would just refer to your packets, and I apologize for that.
Can you just go ahead and direct us to the, are we in the drawing set? Is that the best place to be?
Yes. So go to the drawing set, and a good page to settle on would be sheet.
The aerial is page four of 27, but do you want us to look at the...
I'm going to take you straight to the elevations. Page 11 is a good, is a good sheet. This sheet shows existing elevations as well as the proposed elevations, and so it's easier to see what is proposed.
Let's just make sure counsel's there. Everybody on page 11? Okay, thanks.
Okay. So on the lower photo simulation that you see on this page is a 906-square-foot port-cochere, and it's mostly an open-air structure with separation between the ribs and its unconditioned space that leads to the main lobby. You also see that there are two existing dormers on the existing structure. One of those two would be removed, and it's office space, and what that does is create an area open to below in the lobby for more spacious room. The applicant also proposes removing the existing stone columns of the Italianate design and replacing these with rustic rectangular wood posts that's more in keeping with the proposed agrarian architecture that, that is before you tonight. The applicant proposes replacing the existing clay tile roofing with a new standing seam metal roof in a brown copper color, and adding a new outdoor lounge area with seating that's anchored on one side with a fireplace that is on the port-cochere, and includes a new 36-inch stone wall around the building. These, the port-cochere and the seating area result in the elimination of four parking spaces, one of which, the ADA space, is relocated to the north of structure. The applicant also proposes removing 12 cypress trees but otherwise retaining mature significant trees on-site, and proposing new landscaping. Other than the lobby, the applicant proposes more minor exterior changes to both the conference center and the former spa, which are located closer to the, to the Mulberry Street extension. And these really consist mostly of reconfiguring the existing windows and adding some new windows and doors, really considered pretty minor. The former spa facility, however, also involves a proposed change in use. And it is important to note that this is not the main spa facility that you see on Washington Street that's active and part of the hotel in use, but this is further back toward the parking lot at the rear, and it has, is not being actively used as a spa. So the proposal is to convert that into a luxury villa that could be divided into as many as five suites, and then the swimming pool that is back there will become the private swimming pool of the villa. On September 13th, the design changes were presented to the Zoning and Design Review Board, and they voted 5-0 to recommend that the town council approve the project as presented. They had positive impressions of the architectural design, but they had some concerns on the landscaping, the lighting, and some of the parking, because the, the focus of the set that went to the ZDRB were the architectural elements rather than the others, which were more conceptual at that time. The applicant has responded by retaining all significant existing trees, which include the Canary Island date palm that's to the south of the structure, and the existing southern magnolia and flowering cherry that are on the north end. Thank you, Michelle. And the applicant has also developed a more, that was a great slide you were just at.
Go back one.
More developed landscape plan. Except I'm going to go back a few more, actually. Okay, so unless, I will just quickly go back to elevations.
Sure.
A little thrown in the presentation. These are all the changes that I was describing to the front of structure that changed the look from something that's more Italianate and thematic to something that's more agrarian and a simple vernacular design. So in response to the ZDRB concerns, the applicant has submitted a more developed landscape plan. These photos here show the inspiration behind that design, and they indicate that it's an agrarian look that is direct, bold, and simple, and you can see the types of plants they propose. They propose adding an olive tree at back of sidewalk and seven flowering trees in the parking lot, as well as four mulberry trees in the new outdoor lounge area. And I'll just go back to the simulation here, and you can see that new outdoor area there to the south of the port-cochere. We find that the, the landscape plan has more details, but it is more conceptual at this stage, which is very common when an applicant brings forth architectural drawings. And for this reason, we're proposing a condition of approval that the final landscape plan come before staff-for-staff level approval, as well, as long as it's consistent with the town code, and based on the design themes that they've noted here. The applicant also responded to concerns over lighting by describing the design intent of the lighting plan, and that is to use shielded and directional lights and to utilize optical controls and dimmers, that the idea is to really have low-level ambient lighting that highlights building forms, provides safety on the path, and highlights the landscaping. Again, it is more conceptual at this stage, other than the description, so we're proposing a condition of approval that they conduct a photometric study and that their lighting comply with the town standards. The applicant also responded to ZDR concerns that valet parking would result in stacked vehicles that would be visible from the street and detract from the streetscape. So the applicant has explained the intent is to create a valet drop-off zone for the guest reception and lobby area, but that vehicles would be moved to the rear of the lot, and other areas that are not visible from Washington would be used for, for parking. I've gone over all of the zoning and design review standards that apply to the project and find that they are consistent with the code. There are just a couple areas I want to note on because they're perhaps less standard, and one of those is floor, the floor area ratio of the property. And I note that the, the town code provides the definition of floor area ratio, and that in this zoning district, the primary commercial zone, that 25% is permitted. When this project was approved back in the 90s, it received approval for 25.6% for the parcel itself, but as I noted, the vineyard to the south was included as open space, and when that parcel is considered, floor area is 18.5%. When the 906-square-foot port-cochere is added, it slightly increases the FAR for the subject parcels to 25.9%, and for the combined two parcels to 18.7%. And these numbers are consistent with the town's standards. I want to note that we have considered the open-air port-cochere as an element that should count toward FAR, even though it is intended by the applicant as essentially a lodging-scale front porch. It is open, it is unconditioned space, it does have the rough-sawn posts that are separated from one another, so at certain vantage points, the walls appear open, but at others, they appear more solid. And it's for that reason, in addition to the chimney that anchors the south elevation, and just the real strong roofline where the gable intersects with the main gable of the building, that we feel it does contribute to massing, and perhaps makes more sense to count as FAR, so that's our proposal tonight. We're also continuing to count the two second-floor office areas, one at the lobby and one at the former spa that were removed, because those don't result in any changes to existing FAR, and where the roof, where the ceiling height is greater than 16, they're actually, 16 feet, it's, they actually should be counted toward FAR. So that's our interpretation of the town's standards. Parking is another issue I wanted to note on, and this is 112 guest rooms that would be adding six guest rooms, and those numbers require 134 spaces. The lot holds 144 spaces, so when we lose the four spaces at, in the front parking lot... the front parking lot, the onsite parking still meets the town's standards and is actually slightly over. We asked the applicant to please submit information on employee parking so we could offer suggestions to better manage that parking. And because of the change in use for...from the former spa to hotel rooms, we see that as triggering a requirement for participation in the town's employee parking management program. Their submittal showed the shift schedules for both properties, both Vintage and Velagio, and it showed a listing of all staff, including house staff, the spa employees, housekeeping, the culinary staff, landscaping, et cetera. And what we see from the staffing is that there are two shifts per day and there's an overlap between the hours of approximately two and five, where the greatest number of employees are on property. There's about eighty-nine for both sites. And staff's goal in recent applications has been to accommodate half of those employees onsite. When you take a...when you divide that between the two properties, that requires twenty-six spaces for Velagio. And we are including a recommendation that those employees park onsite and be part of the applicant's management of employee parking and that they also participate in the town's employee parking management plan. We've included findings for both design review and use permit that show that the project is in compliance with the town's standards. And just quickly noting to the change in use on the spa, what we see there is a proposal to use the four walls of the building. That doesn't increase the FAR for the site, that in a location that is off of Washington and at the rear of the property, so it won't impact adjoining residences and which has ample parking to meet the additional demand of the units. So we are recommending approval for the project, subject to the conditions that are in your staff report and resolution.
Thank you. Questions to the report?
Yes.
Let's go with Councilmember Doran Becker first, please.
Yes, Sandra, my questions are essentially about the employee parking. Can you clarify? Because it looks like we are asking the applicant to host those cars on the property and also asking them to participate in our employee parking management program. Is that correct?
Correct.
And so will all of the employees, are you envisioning them, all of them parking on the property of the applicant?
No, the way it will work is that we'll register all of the employees in the town's program and each will receive a hanging sticker for their vehicle and that the applicant will create a program for twenty-six of those employees to always park onsite. So it has to be managed so that during any one shift, they're parking in pre-approved locations on the Velagio property or on the Adjoysent V Marketplace property, whatever works best for the business to accommodate that number of twenty-six at least. And then the others would be...would receive designated parking in other locations in town and commercial zones in town.
I see. So you're saying that essentially the twenty-six would be allocated to park on their property of the...okay. All right, I was having a hard time getting that all sort of sorted out. Thank you.
Yes, Councilmember Doran.
Are there any employees currently parking on their property now? Do...I mean, my point being is we don't know. I mean, they could all be parking on the street, correct?
They could be and that wasn't a question I asked the applicant, so they can address that. The way I understand it is the back area between the V Marketplace back of house and the laundry area has been typically used for employees.
Right.
But it hasn't been specifically designated that a certain number required to park onsite until this application.
And there is no valet parking there now?
No.
So this would...
Valet parking potentially increases the supply because they can manage the parking. They can stack it.
Good. Okay, very good. Thank you.
If I could also, what you're seeing on the part of staff conditions is a continuing part on our effort to better manage employee parking. And I do want to clarify, we're now being more specific. This applicant's been very honest and straightforward with us in our opinion on providing the parking information because from a historical purpose, we have a blended parking ratio, which is the parking lot is supposed to be adequate to meet the visitor, guest, and the employee count. So what we're trying to do is make sure that a number, a significant number of employees are parked on property first and then whatever spillover would go into designated public parking. And when I say public parking, I'm talking about Washington Street, Yount Street, some of those areas that are not, because I want to make it real clear. We do not count or allow the applicant to use the public parking in the street right away towards their count. So we've heard from the neighbors that this is an appreciated approach and it's really a continuing step for us to better understand the parking dynamic and be able to react to changes. I don't know that it's perfect, but as Councilmember Doran pointed out right now, we actually do not have a mechanism in place. I would say that historically, this property and their companion properties have been better employee parked. We probably have more challenges with some of our restaurants where we do know some properties that really tell their employees not to park on property and what we're trying to do is change that paradigm a bit. So apologize for the diatribe, but I thought it was really important that when we start putting these equations in, we want you to see how we're trying to apply it. And I do want to give credence to the applicant here for working with us and recognizing that this can be helpful to them as well.
Vice Mayor?
So I have a couple of questions. The first one has to do with the proposed timing for the beginning and completion of the construction. I know we're only talking about one property, but this would also apply to the other properties. So my first question is, will the construction start on both properties about the same time? And I think I read someplace that they would like to start immediately.
I will defer to the applicant on that question.
Okay, we'll talk about that. Have you had a conversation with the applicant about our new construction and landscaping noise ordinance? This is probably going to be one of the newer, bigger projects that that will now...that change will apply to because it'll be a delay start time, be nine AM, and construction workers are usually used to starting early. Have you had any conversation with them about that?
I believe we have shared that.
Okay. And then, as well as the landscaping, because maybe they can address that, because a lot of times the businesses like to do landscaping, you know, blowing and stuff on the weekends and that won't be allowed either. Have you shared that with them? Maybe they can address that later.
I may not have shared that aspect of it, but it'll be part of their moving forward.
Okay, those are my questions. Thanks.
So a couple of things. If I understand correctly, looking at the proposed renovation rendering, the first one that's been modified, there was originally lawn that was kind of an exterior border and now that's not the case?
It was not proposed as lawn, but it was such a conceptual illustration. It looked like lawn.
Okay.
So they've brought more detail to the...
And so they're not proposing any lawn?
No, and they never were.
Okay.
It was just lost in the drawing.
Got it. Okay, that's fine. The street frontage...so I'm just trying to get clarity on. I see the design of the lobby area itself. The parking lot becomes one large rectangle of hardscape? The two fountains go away? All the shrubbery goes away?
They're bringing in new landscaping and new trees. There will be the seven flowering trees that are set in pairs between the parking spaces closest to the sidewalk and there will be significant landscaping there. I think when we turn to the applicant's presentation, they have a better drawing of that than I do in my presentation.
Yeah, because looking at the aerial, I'm trying to figure out why are we losing four spaces if two of those large fountains are being removed and are they...
The four spaces are in the location of the new port cochere, which is bumped out into the fountain area. And then to the south of that, the new outdoor lounge area. It's coming out about nineteen feet from existing base of the building.
So we're just not getting as many back that we might be getting in that...
We're keeping the ones on the east side closest to the street, but we're losing the ones that were closest to the building.
Right, but we are potentially, unless it's just total walkway space, and maybe you'll be giving that presentation and add clarity, it just seemed like there was room for at least two, if not more, spaces in that existing or...and continued parking area. I get that you're talking about where the outdoor seating area and the extended lobby area have taken away what was kind of check-in temporary parking.
And now that's replaced with the valet in front of the new port cochere and that area.
Okay. It's mainly getting to how many vehicles are impacting the street with this new configuration, so maybe somebody on the team can address that. So you said that the internal change of use from the spa, the old spa area to suites is basically a non-issue for you because it's all basically internal, it's not seen off property, so it's kind of a wash?
Correct, yes.
Okay, I think that's all. Well, the other thing was, you're talking about valet and stacked parking. You maybe just mentioned it kind of casually, but I don't remember there being any real space behind the hotel for stacking parking. Are you talking about only on the large parking lot between the two, between, you know, the north side of Velagio and south of V Marketplace?
The subject property includes many of the spaces that one would think are part of the V Marketplace, including the bus area that could accommodate stacked parking, as well as the drive aisle closer to the new spa. So there are areas that stacked parking could be accommodated.
So that would be where the valet would be taking a vehicle and placing it over
Those are opportunities, yes.
Far away from the lobby area. You're not expecting guests to do that?
Yes.
Okay. I think we'll just find out all the rest of our answers when we hear from our applicant. So I know we're going to have a little technical transition here also. Is that right? Sandra, are we ready for that?
Yes.
One more question, Vice Mayor?
I have one more question based on your response to the mayor on the last question. So if you put stacked parking where the bus parking is, would that means bus parking will be eliminated?
Potentially, yes. There's room still to figure out how all the uses are going to use the space.
I see a lot of buses in those bus parking places. I don't really know who they belong to, but thanks.
Okay, so I think we're ready for the applicant to start and our folks, are we...do we need for them to talk slowly or are we...
We're ready.
Ready to transition? Okay.
Oops.
Now we're unplugged.
Didn't that work?
Excuse me?
Well, there's something on there, but it's a different format. See, that is here. But it's not that power point format.
Okay, let's just see if we can get this down.
We're not all watching you do this.
There's no pressure.
That's fine.
What was that password?
Password.
Look at that!
Very good.
Where'd it go?
Oh, I see.
Yeah, so...
Okay, you're ready?
That would work, I think.
Okay, so you got to plug this in. You got to plug this into your laptop. Yep. If you have extras, okay. All right. Okay, don't trip over all the wires.
That was like NASCAR.
That was great. Great job.
Good evening, councilmembers and mayor. My name is Bruce Wright and I'm the principal in charge at SB Architects. And this evening, we're here to explain a little bit more and give a bit more detail of Sandra's excellent explanation with and without exhibits. So with us here tonight to ask questions and get the clarity that you might need is our owner, Mr. Hiran Weerkun, who's here, our general manager, Mr. Steve DeVino. And then from the design team, where the architects were designing the structures, we have our landscape architecture firm, Gervin and Associates, is represented by Paige Martin. And then we brought our lighting designer, Nick Albert, who's with Illuminate. And I think between all of us, we can answer many of the questions that you might have. And hopefully with this brief, but a little bit more in-depth presentation, we can talk a little bit more about the specifics of the Velagio development. So as was mentioned, this is really about an upgrade and a renovation to an existing property. And I think the intent of our goal is to keep much of the property the same, but make some improvements that we think would be in keeping with the character of the town, the character of Washington Street, and the agrarian nature of Yountville and the greater Napa Valley that would be a significant draw. And in the hospitality business, what we're seeing these days is the increased awareness of travelers for kitsch and for overly thematic sorts of developments is starting to fall by the wayside. And people are really interested in expressions of architecture and experience that are much more authentic to the place. And Yountville's a fabulous town that's developed around hospitality, around food and wine, and really experiencing the outdoor environment and the climate here. So we wanted to prepare a series of upgrades and renovations that really spoke to those core ideas. So let me just take a step back and talk about this site plan. So this is the Velagio tract and there's really three tracks. There's the open space vineyard to the south. There's track two, which is the Velagio Inn and Spa, which is an assembly or a village of smaller buildings. And then there is the tract along Washington Street where the current existing spa is operating on a daily basis and is an important part of the Velagio hospitality offering. Tonight, we're talking specifically about three items. In the south, there's the Velagio Inn and Lobby, and we'll get into greater detail about that, about their rival court and about the architecture and the look and feel of the landscape, the lighting, et cetera. And then there is the Velagio Retreat, as it's noted here, and that's really the adaptive reuse of what was the former spa into five guestrooms. And lastly, there's the Velagio Conference Center, which is simply upgrading that space with interior renovations and a series of doors and windows, again, that bring the property up to current traveler expectations. So these are some photographs of the existing Velagio Inn. And I think that I mentioned before, there's sort of this Italianate concept that was developed in the past. It was a bit more thematic. And our ownership group thinks that we can upgrade, renovate, and really change what is sort of a parking lot with a series of shrubs and trees into something that has much more of a stronger connection for the pedestrian to Washington Street into the town. And the idea is to create a landscape palette, an architectural palette, that's in keeping with this new vision of the property and at the same time, be respectful of the existing trees and much of the elements that we want to maintain onsite. This is some of the photos of the existing lobby space that's part of our renovation. And again, we're looking at some significant changes to help create a greater connection to the outdoors, to the fabulous landscape, and to the wonderful climate that we have here in Yountville. So this is the proposed exterior renovation, and this was an updated rendering that's really a response to some of the questions that Chair Cook had about what's the look and feel of the building and how does it work with both the existing vegetation, this notion of a motor court, and some of these indoor-outdoor experiences highlighted by the port cochere, sort of this iconic double-sided fireplace and an outdoor seating environment in where we're giving human pedestrian scale space that once was parking back to the guests of the Velagio Inn. And our idea was to add a signature element that is an architectural feature. We didn't really see it so much as FAR, it's non-conditioned space, but we wanted to increase the presence on Washington Street in an appropriate way, but also sort of signal guests as they're arriving to the hotel that this is really the front door. This is where you're welcomed by both the valet and maybe concierge and that your experience at the hotel begins at that point. This is a rendering of some of the interior renovations that we're proposing for that same space. So if you remember the earlier slides of the existing space, it was very sort of a low-constrained space and we want to lift that volume. We want to renovate the interior to have a much more sensitive but contemporary mood, have that strong connection from the interior to the exterior and really blur the line of indoors and outs so that we can allow our guests to enjoy the wonderful exterior environment along with... to enjoy the wonderful exterior environment along with the new renovated interiors. So this is an updated plan, maybe that was missing from before. And Paige is going to join me here and talk a little bit more about the port cochere and some of the key elements here, and how we're out really deleting parking and including a sense of landscape and outdoor public space that will help support our guests and their expectations.
So for the, basically I want to talk a little bit first about the site plan, and then we'll get into the landscape and the proposed plans.
Just move that down just a little bit for you. Great, thank you.
So as Bruce said, basically the vehicular circulation will remain very similar to what it is today. The curb cut from Washington Street will be the same curb cut. We're not proposing anything different. But basically, the auto court is going to be simplified from what it is today so that it's all decorative accent paving, so that when you pull in, you really have a sense of arrival. And that accent paving basically will slow people down and make them feel welcome, and then they'll be greeted by this arbor porcupine that comes out, which will help in inclement weather when those days do occur. There is registration parking still included here in the auto court in the front, and that allows guests to pull in and park temporarily. And if those spaces are full, then the valet can take that and move it to a separate location. There is also still ADA accessible parking and a route for ADA to get directly from that parking to the front door, and it's the most direct route, so we haven't changed that at all. In fact, we've improved it from what it exists, how it exists today. And then the rest of the site plan, just talking about the things along Washington Street. Basically, there's a nice, strong access point, pedestrian access point that goes from the arbor straight out to Washington Street. It's direct. The paving will change in that location, so it'll still be vehicular paving and still can handle vehicular paving, but the color might change so that it's a very clear delineation of how people can connect from Washington Street to the lobby. Along the front of the lobby is an outdoor courtyard, which has a seamless transition from interior to exterior space and allows for lounging and socializing in front of the building, as well as having some amenities. One is the fireplace, the two-sided fireplace that's integrated into the arbor. The other is a fountain, an infinity-edge fountain that has a fire feature for the evening, for ambiance, and it has a little bit of noise and will be a very welcoming part of this outdoor courtyard. One of the great benefits of this site is that it has beautiful existing trees, which helps set the architecture into the landscape. So we're protecting as many of those trees as possible, with the exception of this Italian cypress. We feel like those don't really add any value to the new design. The new design is more simple and modern. And the Italian cypress are, they are such a vertical element that they just become a straight design feature rather than something that creates shade and creates a dappled area where people can sit and get underneath a little bit of shade during the hotter months. So the circulation, the vehicular circulation and the pedestrian circulation has been renovated to deal with making a little bit better connection with Washington Street and is very direct in terms of how people come and enter into the resort. The existing trees, like I mentioned, are really nice examples of the pistachio. You know, there's beautiful fall color right now. You come down Washington Street and you can really see how beautiful fall is in Yountville. There's a nice backdrop of olive trees along the, let's see, that's the north side of the auto court. Those will all remain. There's a southern magnolia, there's a Canary Island palm, which is very prominent. And once that gets up a little bit taller, will be a really nice tree in the skyline as you're pulling into the resort, as well as some other ornamental trees. All of those trees we're protecting except for the Italian cypress. So those Italian cypress are shown with the Xs over them in this exhibit. In the proposed plan for planting, for additional trees, we're proposing that there'll be a bosque of mulberry trees in the outdoor courtyard, which offer really lovely shade in the summer and open up in the winter. They're deciduous. They open up in the winter and allow that light to come into the courtyard and warm the courtyard. There are seven crepe myrtles that are proposed in the parking lot area. Those are proposed in a very wide island, which will allow them to be successful, and they'll obviously be irrigated. But crepe myrtles tend to be a very good drought-tolerant tree, and they also have beautiful bark and flowers, and they're very all-season trees because they have the beautiful bark in the winter when there isn't the leaves, and then they bloom for a very long period of time from the spring through the summer. We're also suggesting that there are a couple of more olives added to the tree palette. We're trying to keep the tree palette very simple and direct, and so a lot of the existing trees will have, those existing tree types will be used again on site. So there's already existing olives there, so we'll be adding some more olives. This is a section that goes through from Washington Street, which is over on the left, and you're looking south. So you're looking towards the vineyard. The vineyard is in the background. And then the resort lobby and the new porcupine are on the right. So what you can see here is that there's the temporary parking on the left. There's vehicular circulation in the center. And then there's planting. There's a nice planting buffer, a really wide planting buffer between Washington Street and the parked cars. And it's intended to be something that will buffer the front end of those cars. And so it'll be something three to four or five feet high so that it'll screen those plants, but, I mean, cars, the front of the cars. But it will still allow some visibility into the resort so that it feels welcoming to people walking along Washington Street. In the distance is proposed heritage quercus agrofolia, which is a coast live oak. We wanted to integrate a really nice agrarian tree. And that, you know, as you drive all around the valley, you see these oaks. And so a big heritage tree there on access is a focal point. As mentioned earlier, the overall design theme for the landscape is more agrarian. It's more simple. It's more direct. And it pulls from, one of the really nice things is the track to the south is a vineyard. And so why not pull that into the resort a little bit more? So many people come here to see wineries and to drink wine and just enjoy the valley. And so the idea of the agrarian vernacular is to bring some of that into the landscape and the features. So instead of basically protecting, we want to protect the accent trees and the mature trees and the mature canopy, but work with the ground plane to simplify it a little bit more. So the clipped hedges go away. The really fussy, colorful plants will go away and will be instead replaced with big swaths of plants like lavender, things that would be edible. And there will still be color, but it will be larger swaths of it, so it will have more impact and will be reminiscent of the agrarian landscape. This exhibit shows basically the existing parking as it is today, and it's just discussing the parking in the front. So there are the spaces that are along Washington Street as well as the ones that are along the lobby. And there is an ADA space in front of the lobby. The proposed parking maintains nearly as many as the parking spaces as exist today, but it allows for a van ADA space and a regular ADA space right off to the left of the lobby with a direct pedestrian access into the front door. It also allows for temporary parking along Washington Street.
Great, thank you. So we'll just quickly continue on through the rest of the slides. This is the existing elevation and the proposed elevation. It's represented in some of the three-dimensional renderings. Again, some of the interior views. This is the exterior view, and I wanted to make one small amendment is that the wall that we were suggesting is part of these renderings is really about a 24-inch-high wall, and that connects with an existing stone wall that's there on site. So this is just a continuation of the vocabulary that's there. And it's intended to be a seat-height wall and provide some sort of psychological demarcation line between the lobby space and this parking courtyard. This is, again, a rendering that was developed as a response to some of the questions from the ZRDB that talks about the character of the space. And I thought I'd just bring up Nick Albert with Illuminate, who's our lighting designer, to talk a little bit about both the building lighting and the site lighting.
Hi, good evening. As was mentioned before, it's still very early in the process for lighting, so the specifics of the plan and the details of the fixtures are to be developed. But where we're working from, really on both properties along with the design team, is a concept and a goal of trying to reinforce the architecture, the architectural improvements to the site, and to enhance the nighttime environment. Bruce was talking a lot about the connection of interior to exterior. And at night, that's especially important so that people feel that they can move in and out from the site amenities to the interior of the building as well. And so that those are balanced nighttime environments rather than one being much brighter than the other. So where it comes to architectural lighting, it's really about enhancing the building's character, reinforcing the architectural palette, but doing so in a way that's in keeping with the nature of the nighttime brightness up and down Washington Street and really throughout the town. So we're not looking to overemphasize anything or heighten awareness of anything. It's really to let it blend into the nighttime environment, to be respectful both of the town character as it exists, also to be respectful of the environment, where we talk about using shielded fixtures, fixtures that prevent sky glow or light pollution, fixtures in their use and placement that prevent light trespass onto adjacent properties, onto the adjacent street, or view of source from outside of the property. So everything should be shielded. It should be subdued. Really about reinforcing paths of travel. People should feel safe. They should feel comfortable. Both the site and the architecture wants to be inviting and welcoming to visitors. And as long as the property and the business are operating, at a certain point in night, it wants to sort of dim or be reduced to reflect a more appropriate later-night character. So the goals here will really be to meet all of the municipal codes and best-practice standards where it relates to lighting. So again, the fully shielded directional methods, only lighting things that can contain the illumination. No general sort of broad flood lighting would be included. These are very specific tailored approaches to lighting so that we're not using excess illumination or providing excess illumination where it's not needed. Energy conservation awareness, using high-efficacy LED sources where possible, warm color temperatures, 2,700 degrees Kelvin, more of a warm white, sort of soft glow. Reduced spill light, reducing view to sources from adjacent properties, and meeting all of the safety and requisite use guidelines for brightness for this type of space.
And then just about the color palette. So the existing building now is a stucco body with an existing clay tile roof. It's a sort of a faux clay tile roof. We're proposing a standing metal seam roof that's brown in color. The door and window system will be a darker bronze. We're using stone, stucco, and wood, and wood that's stained, that retains the natural character. And we're careful to use materials and a vocabulary that's found along Washington Street, whether it's the rec center with its metal roof or some of the more rusticated colonnade. We think that all of the improvements are in keeping with the town and the character and will draw the specific attention to the building that this deserves. I think that's our list for Velagio. Happy to answer any questions from operational side, architectural or landscape specifics.
Okay, we may end up having you jump up and down depending on what the question is. We'll try to do it kind of coordinated. Questions? And Michelle, I don't remember if I officially opened the public hearing before I invited our applicant, so we'll reflect that in the record that the public hearing began with the applicant's presentation. Any questions?
One at the moment. You referred to a two-foot wall across the top, but in the narrative, it says three foot. Right. I think there was a, it says three feet, but our goal is just to mimic the existing wall height that's there. And I think if you visit it on site, it's about two feet tall.
Okay, good. Can you speak to the parking? The valet parking, the operations, the day-to-day use?
So from an operational standpoint, I think our general manager would be best to speak to, address those questions.
And possibly before Steve gets up, they might have other questions about the design
Sure.
before we start asking him to come up, so.
Yeah, let's cover the design. Try to contain it between the three of you, and then we'll have Mr. DeVino come up. Any other questions for these three? Counselor Dornbecker?
Yes, I do have a few. Thank you. I think that it looks very nice. I do have some questions. I really have not been able to determine where the fountain is that your colleague was talking about.
I think it's a, let me just go to the enlarged plan here. So I don't know if this has a pointer or not. But there's four new mulberry trees where there was existing parking, and it's just set below them.
All right, I see. Thank you. And then there was a small bocce court on the side of the driveway. Is that going to be retained?
Yeah, the intent is to retain the bocce.
All right. And in the lighting, are the walls, it looks in this drawing set that the walls on the front of the building are uplit and trees uplit. Is that the intent?
There would be some amount of lighting provided to emphasize the exterior walls. But that would be directional in nature, so it would be contained only to what it's lighting. There wouldn't be spill light adjacent to that. So using the architecture and focusable, aimable fixtures, we would contain all of that illumination only onto the surfaces that it's intending to illuminate.
Thank you. And then are the planned crepe myrtles, are they all going to be the same color? Are they going to be different colors?
They're intended to be the same color.
And my final question is, in the seating area in the front next to the porcupine, are you planning to serve wine and food in that setting?
Yes, the plan is, is for hotel guests, it's the same offering that's on the opposite side of the terrace. Perhaps Mr. DeVino, when he's here, can give a bit more operational comment on to that.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
There is a path that runs along the entire property, not just this hotel in the back by the creek. And I believe that that's part of your property, it's not town property. Have there been any discussions about providing some light back there so people could walk there in the evening when it was dark? Have you walked that path?
I haven't walked it in the evening. And we haven't had any specific discussions about lighting outside of the specific property here. And as it relates to the open space or the vineyard, that's still a topic for question.
So you're open? Is that what that means?
Well, I think as an architect, I think adding light and making things safe is great, but I think it's a question for our ownership on how they'd like to proceed.
And I think it's outside the scope of the And I think it's outside the scope of the changes to the development agreement that you're requesting with this application. Future applications may address that if that's part of the overall renovation of the other spaces.
Yeah, our specific scope is just limited to the Velagio Inn track that we were discussing and as a design team.
That is the architects, okay.
Yeah, we're not really contemplating any changes.
I do need to clarify, the internal path that you're talking about is on the Velagio track, so it is appropriate. If there's a concern or question in terms of the overall application, if I'm interpreting the path that you're talking about correctly.
The one that's adjacent to the bike path, correct?
It's on the Velagio property.
Adjacent to the creek in the back parking lot, yeah.
So I mean, in that large area that you refer to as Track Two, the path does start up from the tennis courts, it comes down, and then it follows on to the vineyard. So I'm just saying, if there is a concern from the council, it would be appropriate, given the overall modifications proposed for you, especially with the multiple things that are presented, because it is...that path is primarily on this track that's the primary and the secondary track.
So it fits in the amendment to the...
Correct, that's a short answer, correct.
And even Track Three, since it serves as the open space for the subject parcel.
Basically, we're talking about along the black dotted line that's to the west of the tracks, roughly.
Of Two and Three.
Yeah.
Understood.
But so just so I'm clear, no one's really looked at that path, or...
There's no proposal for lighting on that path in this application.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
I think I have one question for each of the three presenters so far. How do you see this design concept for the lobby integrating with the existing spa along Washington Street? Because that's extremely different from the existing Velagio visual design, and so how did you factor in how this fits with that being just to the north and along the streets there?
Well, I think generally it's the same palette of materials. There's a differentiation in the specific roof type, but if you're looking at stone and water and stucco features, it's a similar vocabulary, but this building is slightly different than all of those to help draw attention, and really, this is a campus of buildings, and not...just like the town, not every single building in Yountville has the same expression, but they work together in size and scale, and so we see this operating in much the same way. It's not really our intent to make them all look exactly the same, but we wanted to draw presence and a sense of entry and some upgraded elements to this particular building to note its stature on the site.
Yeah, you want it to stand out, basically.
Yes.
Okay. The next one is about those same crepe myrtles in the parking area. It's an extension of Councilmember Dornbecker's question. Okay, same color, but you didn't tell us what color. And my curiosity is how it works with our existing streetscape, which is principally Chinese pistachio and those reds and oranges that come out, and have you balanced that out with what you're doing with your aesthetic right next to that?
So I would imagine that it would probably be the crepe myrtle Naches, which is a white blooming crepe myrtle. It's very full and rich, and I think would be very complementary to the other colors that are in the landscape. The landscape palette for the Velagio is intended to be more textural in shades of green and chartreuse, and then having some purples and some yellows, and that's where I think the white could look very nice and would be complementary to the rest of the palette. There are a lot of different types of crepe myrtles, and there are some that are very bright colored. There's one called Watermelon, which is like a hot, hot pink color, and the white is kind of beautiful and will be complementary of the rest of the plants in the palette.
And their root systems are shallow and...
They're not invasive, no. They're a very nice garden tree and won't interfere at all with any sidewalks. They won't pull up any of the sidewalks.
Okay, great. My other question relates to...it could be...it's actually more architectural than it is lighting, I think, but I identified it when I saw this image, but I actually am going back to the east elevation. There are a couple of different renderings of windows along the east wall, and there's what I see as an inconsistency, like this image that you just had up had the accordion doors, or whatever types of doors you've got there, but there isn't a bank of windows immediately to the right of that, just to the south of the entry, but on your elevation graphic, you have a second set of...I'm looking at page 11 of...right there.
Right.
You have a second set of windows there, and the windows to the north of the entry are all removed. So is that north wall completely now solid? And can you just speak to how much window? And I'm not so worried about light spillage from inside or outside, I'm worried about the massing of the structure. Do you require the landscaping to soften that longer hard wall, or what's your thought there?
Yeah, so the lower proposed elevation is the design direction that is most representative of what we're proposing this evening, and there are a series of operable doors that's on the right side of the elevation that would be and create this direct connection to the lobby-lobby lounge space. There's another series of windows just to the right of them that would...are to remain and are sort of similar in keeping to the size and scale of what's existing. Then there is the main port cochere element where we have a series of operable and fixed glazing components, like fixed leaf components with transom glass above it that opens up into the lobby space beyond. And then based on the configuration of the new restrooms and some of the back-of-house components, there's not a need for additional windows or glazing in that particular location, so that's why we've eliminated those, but we've used a series of landscape elements and trees to help shield some of that and break down some of that massing.
So those...the four windows there between the lobby slash outdoor lounge doors and the port cochere, that's an accurate rendering.
Yes.
The lighting graphic that we saw later doesn't include those four windows.
That's correct.
But they're proposed to be added to that wall.
Yeah, those would occur just behind those trees that you see there. So there's the existing colonnade, which right now is stone columns, and we would modify those so they're just the rustic posts that are there, and that colonnade would remain on the building as it currently exists today. And then behind where those crepe myrtle trees are, that would be the new windows. So this rendering is not accurately showing those elements.
Okay, I'm just concerned about there's quite a bit of cleaning up of that space and removal of, you can call it clutter, you can call it whatever, with the Italian cypress and all that, and so some more of that wall is going to be exposed, especially as the landscaping is maturing. So that's why I just wanted to get some clarification of how much solid massing we were talking about.
Yeah, let's just take a look at the plan here. So you can see that there's two existing trees there. I think they have an E on it, if I can still see. And then there's a suggested additional olive tree. So those windows that you're referring to, that facade that could be of concern, has both a sort of an understory of planting and then new trees along there. And I think that the distance between Washington Street and the building itself, and then the layering of landscaping will help address that condition.
Got it. I just wanted to get clarity on what was being proposed there.
Good question.
Okay, so those are the questions that we have for you right now. I think we had a couple that maybe Mr. Davino can address. One from Councilmember Durham, and then if anyone else in the team would like to make comments, we would invite them.
Of course.
Good evening, everyone. Steve Davino, I'm General Manager of Velagio Vintage Inn and the Vintage Estate. So I heard a couple of questions I think I'll address. One has to do with parking for employees, I think came up. We actually do have a current detailed parking plan for employees but are happy to be part of the parking management plan moving forward. We really have five designated parking areas for employees currently.
Do you want to show that graphic?
No, I don't think so. I can just describe it. So, and as Sandra mentioned, we have an AM and PM kind of shift schedule for our employees. So we have 21 employees that park behind Velagio, the Hotel Velagio, 15 in the AM, six in the PM shifts. And then if we look to the first track, which is considered the spa area, we have 18 people parked there, 10 during the morning and eight in the evening. And then we require parking for banquets and the like, and kitchens park behind where the buses currently park. We have 32 in the morning that park there and 15 in the evening. And then Area Four would be essentially just behind the Grosinger House and where our kitchen is. We have eight people parked there in the morning and two in the evening. As it relates then to Vintage Inn, we have 12 that park behind Vintage Inn in the morning and six in the evening. So we really do control it currently pretty well, but again, as I say, happy to participate in the parking program. So that's where everyone currently parks. And the upside of doing some of the study that Sandra, you know, asked us to do as part of this, we found that 29% of our employees actually either carpool or take public transportation, which I thought was quite high when we did that analysis. So that's the employee parking question. As it relates to parking for guests, our plan, actually in both properties, and we'll talk to Velagio at the moment, is to do...is to offer the guests either valet parking or self-parking. And, you know, as a guest pulls up, the area you saw out there where there was a gentleman standing behind a desk, that's really a bell desk and arrival desk, we'll greet the guests, ask them if they...you know, if they're checking in, we'd like to either valet park or self-park. If they'd like to self-park, we'll pull them in front, get them checked in, and then escort them to their room, or if they'd like to valet park, our valet will bring them around as they check in. But that's the operational service delivery we're looking at right now.
Councilmember Durham?
That answers it.
That answers it.
Thank you.
Any other questions specific to parking management? Anything else for Mr. Davino, Vice Mayor?
So I'm going to come back to that path in the back, just because I've been back there many times and it's very dark, and that whole back parking lot is very dark. Has that been something that you've...I mean, is it just no one's really looked at it yet, or is that something that...
You know, we have looked at it, and it doesn't get used very often, probably maybe...
Because it's dark.
Because it's dark at night.
Yeah.
So I think that's something we should look at, I do. It's really actually a very pleasant walk along the path there, and it is on the property from my understanding.
Right, okay.
So I think we could certainly look at doing that.
Okay, so the other question relates to your construction timing and, you know...
Yes, mhm.
Maybe you could...I know we're not talking about the other property yet, but...
Right.
You can do it now.
Right now, the plan is, if all goes to plan, we'd like to start renovating the lobby area in mid-November of Velagio. So, and the guest rooms will also start mid-November. So mid-November, essentially, we would take approximately half, and the schedule varies by day, but approximately half of the guest rooms out of order to renovate. That works well because of the time of the year and the occupancy and the demand in our market beginning in November. Actually, in and around November 15th is when demand really drops significantly in Yountville. So our thoughts are to try to get the vast majority of the construction done between November and May 1st of 2017. And we're going to speak to Vintage Inn, I know, a little bit later.
Okay, so back to the parking. I'm just real curious about the tandem parking and these buses.
Yes.
And the reason I'm asking about it is because if the bus parking is removed, then it's something...right now, they're off the street because they're parking in the bus parkings on your property. So can you speak to the possible tandem employee parking in that area and eliminating the bus parking, or who do those buses belong to?
Yeah, you know, those buses are coming in and parking in town. They drop off people coming out of San Francisco, San Jose, and other areas, and they drop day visitors off essentially and park there, and then stay there until they're ready to leave, and then they leave. You know, it's an area that we're looking at the parking plan for because there's really probably not a lot of reason for those buses to be parked there all day long while people are shopping or visiting Yountville. It's really not a great use of the parking spaces. So we feel there's a better way to do, you know, to manage that. Maybe they drop people off and leave the property and then come back and pick people up, and just a better use of parking.
Okay, thanks.
And you have no...well, you may know, but not everyone getting off those buses is staying on your property and...
Correct.
And so you're offering free public bus parking?
That's correct, we are right now, mhm.
Councilmember Dornbecker?
I was wondering then, what would your alternative instructions be for those buses? Because we can't have those taking up spaces on the streets.
No, I totally, totally agree, and they're not appropriate for anywhere on the street, but, you know, we'd have to work with those transportation companies. We have not sat with them yet in the time I've been there, so, you know, that's something we'd have to do and coordinate with them and obviously the town of Yountville.
I have a question for staff. So could we...could those buses park in the Park and Ride on the corner of Solano in California?
I'm going to suggest not...principally not because they couldn't park there, but just the configuration of that particular lot doesn't. I think Mr. Davino's mentioned two things. One, there are some buses that bring guests that are using the property. They need to manage and understand the guests, the buses that they're inviting, and are they the appropriate ones, and then deal with that. We certainly can work with them on conditioning or the expectation that the bus drops off. There are a couple of alternative locations we may be able to work with. Two churches come to mind, that there may be a need for a short-term lease, but there... and there are some other properties that could be looked at to more efficiently manage that when there's a plant. But again, the first thing is to understand who they're inviting to their property, because if they are dropping people off that are visiting the marketplace, Napa-style, Otimo, Back Blues, then they do need to be accounted for. So that's the part of the dilemma that I think they're still working out in terms of how they're transitioning their property.
Thank you.
Any other questions from Mr. Davino? No, thank you.
Thank you, thanks for that.
Is there anyone else from the team that's going to speak tonight? Or have we heard it all? Okay, very good. Any other members of the public like to comment on this application tonight? Yes, please, come on. Need to have you come on up to the mic. The world wants to hear you.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Mark Houghan, and I live here in Yountville. I had a question specifically for the architect. Does the ridgeline of the port of cochere match the ridgeline of the existing building? It seems to me that there's a conflict as to...I'm not sure as to how that works.
Well, finish your question if that's the only one, then we'll invite him up to the microphone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So just to clarify, the question is, does the ridgeline of this element, yeah, it's...at its maximum, it would match the existing ridgeline elevation, and in its final detail, it could be slightly lower. It's...I think in actuality, the current design is it's slightly lower than the existing ridgeline so that the actual ridgeline will show through...let me see if we can show it in this elevation. This one's actually...appears to be lower, so this is actually the configuration that we're talking about. So the existing ridgeline reads all the way through.
Any other questions from the public? Seeing no others, I'll close the public hearing and invite discussion and consideration by the council. Councilmember Durham, would you like to go first?
Sure. I'm given Sandra's presentation based on all of the feedback from the ZDRB, and also, which is very... and also, which is very positive, all of the willingness of the applicant to work with everything that we've stated. And my understanding that even though we have questions about lights, they still need to come back to you about lights, even though we still have questions about landscaping, they still have to get okay on the landscaping from you. And we have questions about parking, but they still have to come back and join the parking management plan, correct?
Yes.
Very good. So, based on all those findings, I'm fine with this proposal.
Okay. Councilmember Dornbecker?
I agree, because I do agree with the planned findings that the staff has prepared, and with those, you know, the landscaping plan and the parking plan, I, I think it's going to be beautiful, and I'm really glad to see that fountain with the silly statue go. Thank you.
Don't let our Arts Commission hear you say that. Vice Mayor?
I just wanted to make a general comment. I think this is going to be so important and so beautiful for Yountville. I think it's well overdue. The architects have done a beautiful job, in my opinion. I think you're the same firm that they use for the Fremont Abbey remodel, and that is just, just exquisite with, you know, allowing the historical detail to still be there. The interior just really blew me away, so I was very impressed with that. I've been waiting a long time for this remodel, so I am very, very happy that it's coming along, and it's going to be very, you know, economically important to Yountville. So, I just want to thank you very much for doing that. I'm not going to mandate parking in that path in the back, but I'd love for you to, lighting, thank you, to consider that, because I think it's a wonderful path back there. So, I'll leave that to, to your discretion. And I also agree with all the findings in the staff report and welcome the new ownership and the architects and everybody to Yountville and helping us make it even more beautiful than it already is. So, I have no reservations. Thank you.
And I think that it's a beautiful aesthetic, absolutely. I couldn't find any great concern about any of the presentation you've, you've brought forward. The ZDRB vetted some concerns. You answered those concerns. You clearly worked with staff to comply with our regulations and our recommendations on plant types and lighting concerns and virtually everything we normally have questions and, and, and real hesitation about. And so, you've done a wonderful job of bringing a presentation that's very easy to accept and, and look forward to. It's, like I said, it's just a beautiful aesthetic. I think it immediately updates and refreshes the property. It is a very, as was mentioned, it's a kind of a high priority location. It's one of the first properties that you see when you come into the south end of town, and it will really make a very distinct and impressive impact for residents, for visitors, for your hotel guests, everybody. So, I'll commend you for the effort and the quality, the craftsmanship, everything is really exceptional. So, thank you for bringing forward such an easy project to, to embrace. I'll invite action by the council.
I would like to make a motion that we approve Resolution Number 16-3377, approving the Master Development Plan Amendment, including design review, to alter the exterior of the lobby building, former spa building, conference building, and revise the landscape, parking plans, and lighting plan, and use permit to convert the former spa facility into five guest rooms at Velagio and located at 6481 Washington Street, APN 036-330-010.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That passes unanimously. Congratulations. Looking forward to it. Now, we will address Part B. Vintage Inn Master Development Plan and Use Permit Amendments. I'll try to remember to formally open the public hearing this time. And we do have one e-comment that I will be addressing when we get to that.
Okay. Thank you, Michelle.
You all set, Sandra?
So, good evening. Tonight you have before you a master development plan, which includes design review for the vintage property, the Vintage Inn property, and this is the other hotel on the master property there on the other side of the street. This is a 3.68 acre parcel that is the location of Vintage Inn, and it was developed in 1984 with 80 guest rooms, a swimming pool, and the other accompanying facilities. Under the proposal before you tonight, the applicant proposes to make significant changes, significant changes to the exterior of the lobby building, again, to give it its own feel. So, I'll start describing some of those elements. One is to thicken the facade at the north end of the lobby to create a two-story gable element that will feature operable doors with a transom above and a metal arbor that divides the two elements. And it, the applicant also proposes modifying the existing hip roof to create a gable roofline, and this adds 151 square feet to the lobby's second floor where there's an increase in ceiling height, and the space is now usable. Proposed is a standing seam metal roof in a gray finish. And the applicant again proposes to reconfigure the parking lot as an auto court to create a sense of entry to the building, and to remove five existing cypress trees, and to propose a new landscaping theme. And this proposal was first presented to the Zoning and Design Review Board on September 13th. The board voted for one, with Member Allen dissenting not to make a recommendation to the town council, and to request that the applicant return to the ZDRB with revised drawings that address the board's concerns with the stark white color of the building, the removal of existing trees, and the absence of a developed landscape plan, the absence of a lighting plan, and with their questions on parking. And the applicant has addressed many of these concerns before you tonight, similarly to the way they addressed the Velagio issues. They are proposing to maintain all the mature, healthy trees, and this includes the two Japanese maples that are located to the front of the building, to either side of the main entry, and the magnolia that's at the southeast corner of the building. And again, the applicant has submitted a more developed landscape plan, and it includes seven crepe myrtle trees to either side of the new pedestrian walkway that creates this sense of entry from Washington Street. And the applicant has shared illustrative examples of the design intent, and these are very different from the design intent for Velagio. In this case, the purpose is to provide delicate airy and ornamental plantings in shades of white, pink, and purple, and to use a variety of trees and plants to achieve this method. So, again, we are proposing that the landscape plan come back before staff, before installation, and that it meet all the town's requirements, including the water-efficient landscaping ordinance. Again, they've addressed the site lighting and parking, and those are before you in the staff report. I do touch upon the floor area, and the primary commercial zoning district has that maximum limit of 25%. What's unique is when this project was approved in 81, it was approved at close to 30%. It's 29.7. And so, when you look at the additional square footage that is related to the gable and roofline, it increases that to 29.8%, although I think it is important to note the nature of the new square footage that doesn't increase the massing of the building much and is really considered de minimis, so it is supported by staff. Parking is another legal non-conforming aspect of the project I want to note upon. When the project was approved in 1984, 80 spaces were approved for the hotel use. Under the current standards, there would be 91 required, and there are 90 spaces in, in the parking lot. The applicant is proposing to relocate three of the spaces to the Grosinger Mansion site and to use the lobby, or to use the auto court more for guest drop-off and valet. And I do want to note that there, since there is not a change in use proposed, it's still an existing 80-room hotel and will continue to be, that doesn't trigger compliance with the current parking standards, so the, the parking still does remain compliant. What this means is that this may limit other aspects of the property were it to redevelop in the future, if they can address additional increased demand. And we're looking at now three spaces being used on the adjoining property. The applicant has submitted another employee, or employee, employee shifts information, and it's informed our decision to require a certain number of employees on-site and participation in employee parking management program, but you heard from the applicant earlier that they're supportive of that, and they're happy to, to be part of that effort. So, we find that the proposal is consistent with the zoning and design ordinance standards pursuant to the findings in the resolution, and we are recommending approval.
Thank you. Any questions in the staff report? So, virtually all the ZDRB members noted concern about the white exterior...
Yes.
...as proposed, but according to the report, the applicant has determined they want to continue with that color in the, in their proposal.
That's what I understand, yes.
Okay. Just noting that. Okay. If there are no questions in the staff report, I'll formally open the public hearing. And before I forget, I do want to reference one e-comment that was submitted by Kimberly Cook, expressing some concern. Let's see. "The necessary steps are taken to assure the retention and survival of the trees that are going to be put in place." Her concern is that there's a lot of hardscape surrounding where the new plantings would go, and is asking for some level of assurance that those would be able to thrive in, in that condition. And as I noted, there was concern from the ZDRB regarding the exterior color that's being proposed. So, those two issues will be something for you to address and discuss. With that, I welcome you back up as soon as we get everything plugged in.
Sorry, I don't know where it gets there. I can't see it. Sorry. Got it? It looks very similar. Just one sec. There we go.
While we're waiting for this to queue up, I will note the same jogger with dog on the sidewalk in this iteration than the other iteration. I did notice that.
It's an emoji, I think. It's an architect emoji.
Yeah, but I think the vehicles parked changed in this...
Mercedes came to the Vintage Inn. Oh, man, you guys are tough.
Yes.
We're filling the dead air.
Yeah, we're just trying to keep things...
I like to run with my dogs.
Oh, there you go. Okay.
Can't help that. Why, that one, I can't help it. That's what we were experiencing.
Let's try again. Let's see what page is, is there a needed one? What page is that? It's good. We're, we're good now? All, all set?
Don't touch it.
Don't touch a thing.
It doesn't like, it doesn't like apples.
Please, just don't breathe on it.
Thank you for your patience, councilmembers. Mayor, this is our presentation of the, the proposed Vintage Inn renovations. Thank you again, Sandra, for your clear outline. And we'll start with the site plan. So, it's the existing 80-key hotel, and we're really here tonight just to discuss proposed renovations to the, to the lobby building, the arrival, and landscaping and motor court. So, just a quick summary of the existing conditions. It's a beautiful property, lots of existing trees, plants, and I think that we share the same concerns. We want to, we want to maximize and maintain all of that existing vegetation and maintain the sort of layered effect between the lobby and, and Washington Street. This is some views of the internal space, and our design theme here was to create a sort of a light and fresh version of, of the property. Again, continue to develop this indoor-outdoor relationship, the, the great environment that we have here in town, the outstanding weather that we have, and really open up the, the space to the surrounding, to the surrounding landscape environment. So, this is our proposed view, which is, which is a slightly updated view from what the Zoning and Design Review Board had, had seen before. And I think one of the elements that was missing was really the conceptualization of both the lighting and the landscape plan. So, we've provided this view to really reinforce the fact that we are maintaining much of the existing significant trees on-site, and we'll talk specifics about which trees are being maintained and which are removed. But we're, we're continuing to layer the, the vision of the building from Washington Street using landscaping, site walls, and, and architecture to really announce a, a new presence and, and sort of reinforce the sense of entry of the lobby building for the Vintage Inn. This is a, a rendering of the proposed interior changes, and if you remember before, it was all multiple shades of beige. And, and we think that this sort of light and fresh and welcoming environment has a, has a, a real elegance to it, and we're not afraid of white, and we're not afraid of bringing that white to the exterior, and we think it adds presence and stature and, and is in keeping with, with, with the architecture that you find along Washington Street. The appointments are slightly different than what you had seen with the Velagio, but again, the, the interior themes, the furnishings, the lighting, all of this support sort of this notion of a, of a, of a more of a cottage, sort of a country cottage feel. As it relates to, to the proposed arrival, we're really taking advantage of the existing curb cuts that we have for the property to date, and we're, we're just, we're presenting an architectural plan and a, and a landscape design that continues to build on the prominence and importance of the building as it relates to, to the resort development, but also create that visual and pedestrian connection to town and really encourage this pedestrian flow of guests back onto Washington Street and to the Art Walk and, and all of the things that are so fun to discover here in Yountville. Paige, do you want to give some update about landscape and trees?
I think one of the best features about the Vintage Inn is the mature trees, especially the, the little grove of trees around the bus stop. They really, having mature trees in the landscape really helps set it into the community and into the neighborhood. And I think the size and the scale of the trees really make this feel like it's, it's really grounded into the neighborhood. And the, we're protecting all of the trees with the exception of the five cypress for the same reasons at, at the Velagio. They are sheared and pruned into being vertical elements rather than providing a shade canopy. So, all the other trees we're protecting. The two maple trees at the, at the front entry are being protected, as well as the redwoods and the magnolias and the pines over by the bus stop. There's also two really tall Washingtonian palms that you can see actually from a distance, and so those will all be kept. This is a much more simple plan in that it's more direct. The auto court defines that area in the front and removes some of the more ornamental planting that's there today, and opens it up and, and gives it a little bit more of a connection to Washington Street, as well as adding a nice, strong pedestrian access with flowering trees that connect you straight into the lobby building. The existing cypresses that will be removed are the five that are in front of the lobby building. You can see there's a very large maple tree in the front, and that's going to be protected. And a lot of our plans right now are conceptual, and once we take those from schematic design through to construction documents, we'll be studying it in a little bit more detail and making sure that we're able to protect all of those trees and give them a good living environment. We've been working with the arborist on that, and he has evaluated some of these trees. I've had conversations with him and just to ensure the, the health and viability of the trees. The only proposed trees in this front area are the flowering crepe myrtles, and those line the pedestrian path and give a direct connection out to Washington Street. In the same, in a similar vein, we're also improving all the vehicular paving so that it'll all be accent paving, so that when you pull in, you have the nice rumble of, of decorative... paving underneath the tires and which slows people down a little bit. The vehicular auto court is sized larger than what is there now. I think it's about 50 by 50 or 60 by 60. I can't remember exactly. So, although the parking, the three parking spaces for registration are going away and being moved off to the side, there is still room for cars to circulate in that auto court. There's also areas kind of in the corners where the valet could pull people off. So, it's not so narrow that you can't have a good flow of vehicular traffic. Surrounding that auto court is a low concrete wall, and that'll probably be about 18 inches high, but it'll be nestled in paving both on the interior side of the auto court as well as on the outside. So, when you pull into the auto court, there will be a big, large expanse of paving, but in front of that wall, it'll be rimmed with green planting. So, there will be a softening of that wall and the edges around the side of the auto The section shows, this is basically cutting through from Washington Street to the front lobby along the pedestrian path that has the flowering trees, and you can see that the trees lead you straight into the lobby with low flowering trees and shrubs that line the path and set the auto court into the landscape. The landscape concept or character here at Vintage is different than at Bellagio, making it a unique place within the Vintage Estate. The landscape, since it's responding to the interior improvements as well as the architecture, is a little bit more, I don't want to say cottage garden because that implies a very different aesthetic, but it's much more airy, light, delicate leaves that allow, like a Japanese maple, has a very delicate leaf that allows really nice light and shade, dappled shade below. And so, the proposed landscape here will be more ornamental. It'll be flowering roses. It'll be colors, shades of purple and pink and white, and areas where there's shade will have really nice fern gardens and other shade tolerant trees that have white blossoms that brighten up the space. I think there's some areas around that front entry that are a little bit dark now and a little bit less welcoming, and we'll work with an arborist to prune some of those existing trees and let a little bit more light come in, which will allow a little bit better ground plane planting at the bottom of, at the base of the trees. The vehicular circulation now is three parking spaces in the front for reception, and the existing curb cut will remain in the same spot for the proposed. And the way it works now is you pull in and you have temporary registration parking, and then you either self-park, similar to Bellagio, either self-park or there'll now be valet is proposed to help manage the cars. The proposed auto court, this is a proposed exhibit, and it's showing, there's some orange dots there in the corner of the auto court, which shows that you could have some temporary parking pulled off to the side and the cars could be stacked there, but it still is a two-way in and out, and in off of Washington Street and into the internal parking area within the estate with a van parking spot. There's just one ADA van parking spot required, and that will have direct access to the front door. You want to talk about this a little bit?
Yeah, I think this was some of the.
The overall parking.
So, segue from the landscape plan back to the architecture. So, there's the existing elevation and propose, and this represents both the existing foliage and the proposed changes. So, the palette, the palette for the exterior architecture is, remains brick, but we'd like to whitewash that brick to give it a bit more texture, make it less pink, and then add a Borden-Batten siding that you see for the exposed gable that opens back out to Washington Street, really open up the lobby with a story and a half, a two-story space. We have a series of elements. There's the existing colonnade that will remain. As you drive into the auto court, the actual arrival to the front desk is on the door to, just to the left. There's the two doors there that are just below the dormers. That's just behind the colonnade. We're actually going to supplement some additional columns in that colonnade just to give a rhythm to the windows and doors that happen behind it. There would be the existing brick, and then on the gable that faces out, we'll have a series of operable doors and arbor and a transom space that you see behind. But all of that is sort of layered behind this existing landscaping, and you can see the existing trees that will, that will be, that will be, that will remain, plus the added crepe myrtles there to emphasize the la and connection to Washington Street. This is the interior renovation that we talked about before. So, there's a, you'll come in, the front desk is actually located in the back. There's a new focal stair and lift that will take you to the meeting space above that has, that's accentuated with our new gable roofline, but the intent is to lift up the space and really make it this more and well-lit, inviting interior space. So, this was, I included this rendering because this is what we had shown, the ZRDB, and I think it was, it was a bit shocking, actually. And I think that we were in alignment with many of the things that were being discussed during the ZRDB comments because this is really what it's going to look like. And what was missing was really the layer of existing trees, proposed trees, and then this greater understory of planting along our low wall and motor court. So, I think this is a much better representation of what's proposed. And then we've added one more additional view just to reinforce this pedestrian connection and limit the impact of vehicles and really reinforce this connection back to the town for our vintage guests. And then we've included a materials board here that I'm not sure that made it into your set, but the palette is Borden-Batten with whitewashed brick, Borden-Batten that will be sort of a rustic textured finish. We've got aluminum trim, which is sort of that arbor that's attached, that's the demarcation between sort of the operable doors in the lobby lounge to the transom above, and then we're accenting that with a standing seam metal roof that will be a sort of a warm shade of gray. And we think it's quite elegant. We think that it's in keeping with the vocabulary that you find along Washington Street in town, and I think that the layering of landscaping, lighting, and the architecture together will be this warm and welcoming sort of beacon that's at the opposite end of the Vintage Estate property. Thank you.
Any other members of the team? No? Okay. Steve, any comments from you, or we'll invite, I'll invite questions from the council? Okay. Questions of the applicant at this point? Okay. Councilor Dornbacher, and then I'll invite other members of the public.
Okay. So, there was some concern from the chair of the zoning and design review board about the protecting of the trees, and it looks to me like there's enough space for them to be planted, and perhaps it was because of that first illustration that you gave. So, they are not going to be planted in the hardscape of the parking lot. They're going to be sort of inner. Yeah, I'm looking at that one.
Let me just take a step back to the site plan here. So, I think what's important to see is the only trees that are actually being removed are the ones with the red Xs on them, and those are those vertical Italian cypress. The rest of the trees that you see on site will remain. We're going to trim them and do some things to allow some additional light and allow some additional understory. I think if you walk around on the site right now, there's such a density of trees that actually plantings can't grow or they don't survive very well because they don't just get enough light and shade, and I might be speaking out of turn as I'm not a landscape architect, or, but that's the intent. And then we're actually adding more additional trees. So, I think that the character that was represented with that original sketch wasn't really indicative of where we were headed, and all of those trees are planted in a way that they'll all survive and thrive, and that's our intent, is to really reinforce the existing, oh. The existing condition, what happened? It just went dark.
I have no idea.
There you go.
There it is.
And we hope that this series of renderings helps better illustrate that condition.
All right. And then, I thought I heard you say that the entrance to the left of the, of the high elevation and the dormer windows was the area where the actual check reception is.
That's right. That's right.
I see.
So, the front desk function is actually the door on the left?
On the left.
Because when you're coming in, you check in at the hotel and you get a room key or you do whatever business you need to do at that front desk, but we really want to welcome you to this double-height space that's on the interior, which is really the lounge space.
I see.
So, this rendering sort of captures the front desk that's all the way in the back. There's a rendering of a bicycle there. There's some sort of artwork, but then that lobby lounge space is sort of what you're seeing here, and that opens up to this larger gable element.
I see.
And so, that, from that lobby lounge, from the fireplace, you have that kind of visual, direct connection to, back to town.
And there's going to be valet parking also offered there?
Yeah, I think it's a similar parking protocol as to what we saw at Bellagio.
I see. But there is not a bell desk or up there?
So, again, from the operations side, I can let Mr. Davino speak to that, but the idea is there would be some sort of bell desk actually closer to where the car is parked?
I see.
Not necessarily on this gable entry because that's where you'll be greeted as you're arriving or you're departing the property.
Okay. Those are my questions for now. Thank you.
Councilor Dornbacher?
So, it was stated that you'll have the rumble pavers moving in and that the auto courtyard was increased, correct?
Yes. So, the existing condition, let me just show you if we can here, just with some of those existing photos. I think that better shows it.
And you did, while you do that, you did remove all the grass that was out front there, correct?
Yes. That is the plan. So, we don't have any existing, if you look at the existing condition, it's just asphalt paving. It sort of comes in on a curved radius, and still the front desk is sort of in that general location. So, we're just clarifying sort of the arrival process. We're adding pavers and we're enlarging it so there's a little bit more flexibility for parking and movement.
And removing asphalt, correct?
Yes.
So, and they're permeable, correct?
Excuse me?
They're permeable pavers that allows for the movement and flow of the water?
I'm not sure that that's been specified yet. That could be a possibility, but the intent is to create a textured paver that's something different than asphalt that sort of announces the entry.
Vice Mayor?
I do have a question for operations.
No, before we go there, if you go back to the exterior with all the landscaping in place, I see a streetlight.
Yes.
Are you adding that, or does that exist?
Actually, there's, this is sort of like Where's Waldo. There's actually a streetlight there and a fire hydrant, which is accurately depicted in this rendering here. So, those are existing, and we just wanted to make sure we had those elements there.
In the original one without any plants?
Yeah, that was, that was sort of overlooked.
Yeah. So, that exists. Okay, you weren't proposing to add that. Okay.
That's correct.
So, then, how far out does the, that, that look right there, that comes six, eight feet from the main building itself?
See if we can go back to the plan here.
That north-south?
Yeah, so the best that I could, if, just sort of approximation, so if you see the three trees that are adjacent to the bus stop, that's sort of the upper right corner?
Right.
Sort of that band demarcates the planting line, and that corner is maybe the closest tangent to that curve is maybe three or, I don't know, three feet or so, four feet from the sidewalk?
I'm actually referring to the gable, the large wall of windows.
Ah, okay. Oh, in the plan.
Yeah.
So, it's basically just a thickening of the existing condition that's there, and we're just really growing the foundation slightly to allow for this gable form to connect back into the existing roof. So, it's a very minimal change in the plane of the building. Maybe it's easier to see.
It looked almost flush, but then you had that cross-section that made it look like it was jutting out several feet. It's not a critical issue. I just was trying to get a feel for, and then you're creating a brand-new space inside on that second level?
There's an existing space that's there right now. There's a series of meeting rooms, and there's existing dormers that are there already. We're just, we're adding a bit more dormer space to create some more head height so that that's usable attic space because right now that's, let's see if we can take a look.
I've been in the upstairs meeting room, and I'm not that tall, but it's a little difficult for me to even navigate in that stairwell. This one's much more open air above the reception desk, if I saw that.
Yeah, actually, behind those cypress trees is the existing dormers that are.
Right. I'm talking about the other side by the large gable area where you have the open-air meeting room that you showed in your rendering of the interior.
So, in this rendering, right now, there's a vertical stair that's sort of a back-of-house stair that takes you up, and you actually access, if I'm right, Steve, sort of from the terrace behind where you can get up and down interior.
Yeah, yeah.
But we're, essentially, we're just eroding that wall so that we can get vision between the two from the existing space that's there.
And making it usable space rather than back-of-house.
It's a combination of back-of-house and usable space now. We're just expanding the usable space.
Got it. Okay. Very good. Thank you. Any other members of the public have any comment? Okay. I think we'll close the public hearing and have discussion and action.
Do we have a question for operations for Mr. Davino?
Yeah.
Oh, you did? Okay. Thank you for catching that. Yes. Steve, you come back.
We'll open the public comment.
Yeah, I do need to reopen the public comment for this question.
So, it's similar to my last question because we're going to have two big hotels on Washington Street that'll be going under major renovations. I'm assuming at the same time, is that your plan, or how is that going to work?
Yes, in and around the same time. Both lobbies will be undergoing renovation. Our plan is to use the Grosinger House, the Grosinger Estate, for the lobby for both hotels. When we do that, though, we will really have an 80-room hotel. So, the size and scale of that space will really accommodate, be able to accommodate an 80-room hotel, and there won't be many modifications to it. We'll just turn it more into lobby lounge-type furniture to be able to accommodate the guests.
So, you're really not anticipating any slowdown, normal than seasonal that we typically see with that, with your construction plans?
No, that's the beauty of it because of the way the property's laid out. There's, you know, it's spread out so we can really do a renovation without disturbing too many guests, and having the Grosinger Estate there really helps to use the lobby. So, it'll still be a great experience, and we don't expect occupancy to drop significantly in the town during that period. It was a slower time anyway. That's why we're trying to get the renovations done.
So, I mean, just, and from a visual, are you going to be putting up these big construction chain-link fences and stuff, or is it going to be still as pleasing as it can be, you know, at that time of year?
Well, we, actually, we have a meeting tomorrow to discuss that, and right now the plan is to potentially do some storyboard-type application like Restoration Hardware's done.
Okay.
For, in front of Bellagio lobby area and Vintage Inn lobby areas.
Okay, that's a great idea. Thanks.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Okay.
Sorry, Mr. Davino. Can you give me a quick, over, just a very quick answer? How many properties does their lodging involved with, just approximately currently?
About 16. It varies, but about 16.
Cool. Very good. Thank you.
Thank you. I will reclose the public hearing. I will reclose the public hearing and invite discussion and action. See, who started last time? I think he did. So Councilmember Dornbecker, please.
Well, I think that this is going to be lovely. And I guess I can understand the white with the whitewashed brick. That sort of makes sense to me. I think it's going to be a wonderful update and beautiful. So, and I agree with all the findings in the staff report. And so I can definitely support this.
Thank you. Councilmember Durham?
I want to make a quick point, too. So I got approached yesterday at my office hours and I was asked, when they saw the agenda, whether I was pro-business or pro-local. And I thought it was interesting that unfortunately, this constituent saw a line in the sand and didn't see too many overlaps there. And I thought it was interesting because Vintage Estates has set a, has helped Yountville along for quite some time here. And we've been very fortunate to have Vintage Estates and the family here that owned it. But I got to tell you, I get excited on days like today, and that doesn't mean I'm pro-business. It's encouraging when I sat on the ZDRB and I sit on the council now. And I've seen businesses come in and make proposals. And I always laugh because they come in suits. Nick, I appreciate your pocket square. And they tell us what they're going to do to Yountville and for Yountville. It's always very interesting to me. And I just sit here and wonder if they've done any research on us at all. And so it's encouraging, highly encouraging to know that this company's coming in that's given a quality presentation, in my opinion, well-thought-out, taken what the ZDRB had to say and made changes and commented on it. And I thought it was great when they commented on the issues that the ZDRB had with Vintage not matching the rest of the town, but when in fact I've yet to find any building in this town that matches. And that's what makes Yountville Yountville. So with that being said, I appreciate the, I appreciate the time and the effort that's gone into such an integral part of Yountville. So based on Sandra's findings as well, I fully support this.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Well, similar to the architecture and what your plans are, my comments are pretty much the same as they were for the Velagio. But in addition to that, I think that this is a 22-plus acre parcel. And Yountville's only about a mile and a half long. I mean, this is a very significant change for Yountville and how it's going to look. And I am just very pleased with the, all the changes that are coming. The general manager has really thought through a lot of this. And I'm very, very pleased with the architect firm that has been chosen. And similar to Councilmember Durham's comments, you will be making a very, very big impact on a significant change in Yountville with what you're doing to these properties. So I'm very pleased with how they look and welcome to Yountville. And thank you very much for what you're going to be contributing to our town. So I have no reservations and I agree with all the findings as well.
Thank you. I want to follow up on Councilmember Durham's comments in particular. I really respect the awareness, the thoughtfulness, clearly the research that the whole team has done there since, actually, before people even set foot in town, as far as I knew. But the moment the company came here, it alleviated my concern about who is this outsider, this big company? And virtually every company's big when you live in Yountville, when you come from the outside. You know, what's the attitude going to be? You're going to come in with a heavy hand and do something because you've done it half a dozen or a dozen places somewhere else that might be metropolitan areas that have a whole different aesthetic and a vibe and everything. But both of these proposals, and I'll speak to this one in particular, is an evolution of that property. That property has served us beautifully for a long time. And this is an appropriate updating and modernizing of that experience. You've, again, touched on all the elements that we consider very important, from a landscaping to a lighting, to an impact in the overall neighborhood. It's also, frankly, it's refreshing to see white can be a color. I understand that there was some reservation about that. But I think even just seeing it in your renderings, it allows the natural color all around it to really pop. And all of the landscaping that's being proposed, you're just kind of, you're almost switching what would be normally the case. You could have overdone the building and then understated the landscaping that's supposed to accent that. I think you're almost reversing that. So I think it's beautiful. Once again, I think it's functional. The aesthetic is elegant, which is totally appropriate for us here in Yountville. It's comfortable looking. But it's also, it's a fresh look. And I really respect that as well. So I would say, once again, the team has really hit a home run with this. It's very easy to accept it. We usually have conditions that we have to spend an extra 30 minutes trying to figure out how can we find them acceptable. We have virtually none of that concern with this application. So, I mean, you hear the, you hear the support you have. So congratulations with that. And all I have left to do is ask for a motion.
Which I'd be happy to make, but I'd just like to make one more statement. And that is that I think that the residents, and we do think about the residents, the residents are going to be very happy with this change, too, I think, because it's so beautiful. So with that, I'd like to make a motion that we approve Resolution Number 16-3378, approving the Master Development Plan Amendment, including design review, to alter the exterior of the lobby building, including landscape, parking, and lighting plans for Vintage Inn located at 6541 Washington Street, APN 036330005.
My second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Another unanimous vote. So congratulations. Now the fun begins for all of you.
Welcome.
And Sandra, thank you very much for helping make this easy for us, for all the, clearly all the effort that went into working with our applicant and getting us to where we are tonight. So thank you very much. And Michelle and Sandra, thank you for navigating our technology over there also. I'm going to move a little bit slowly here while I know most of our audience is going to head on to the next great adventure. Everybody has all the flash drives they need? Thank you. We're going to move on to our first administrative regular item, an introduction and review of the first reading for municipal code amendments.
Yes.
Yes.
Mayor and councilmembers, this is an item that was continued from the October 4th meeting where staff had identified four different code sections with fairly straightforward updates to the municipal code. You may recall, they included amendments to the municipal code provisions regarding a vacancy in the mayor's seat to bring in line with state law, creating, allowing a tree to be removed in an emergency. The amendment to that, based on the direction from the council last meeting, was to require written approval from the planning officer before that could go in, and that change has been made. Also, utilities, removing trees in town, submitting an annual plan for that and providing notice to the public works and planning officials. And then finally, an exemption for the business license and tax provisions for anyone under 18 running a business and making $1,500 or less a year. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
I think we should change it to the iced tea exemption based on the...
Commercial and TV.
It's been formally coined that now in the official record.
It is. The lemonade stand, okay.
Yeah.
Questions in the report, any? This is really a repeat with a minor modification from the last time we saw this.
Yes.
Okay. Hearing no questions. Any member of the public like to know you wouldn't? We're going to move right on ahead then. And any discussion or action? Anyone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve ordinance number 16-454 and waive the reading.
Introduce and waive the reading.
Introduce and waive the reading. An ordinance of the Town Council of the Town of Yountville amending various sections of the Yountville Municipal Code.
My second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Gary, for doing that. Next up, we're going to go right up to our review of Napa Valley Lodge.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. Tonight, we have before you for consideration adoption of a resolution to approve the summary street vacation of portions of the right-of-way of Washington Street bordering the Napa Valley Lodge. This project, or this particular resolution, is a result of a master development plan, amendment, and a sign permit that was approved for the Napa Valley Lodge in December 2011. That plan addressed existing proposed private improvements that encroached into the public streets right-of-way on Washington and Madison. It also included a condition of approval to perform a lot-line adjustment on Washington Street and Madison with the purpose of correcting the existing situation where private improvements had been constructed in the public right-of-way. The lot-line adjustment was required to transfer ownership of the property at the back of sidewalk. And the conditions of approval included the following. A lot-line adjustment to be conducted so that all of the Napa Valley Lodge improvements were located on the Napa Valley Lodge property. No improvements would be permitted in the right-of-way. Land should be transferred to the Napa Valley Lodge by a grant deed. And easements for public parking and the public utilities along Washington Street frontage shall be provided and executed. So that is the short story of this long project. And lot-line adjustments, I have learned, are sometimes complex and a bit convoluted. This one was no exception. So just to kind of take you back a little bit to 2011, they started to look at the lot-line and the property right-of-way. We were trying to locate a survey monument. That took almost a year to get just the survey monument located and to figure out some of the property line markings. We, from that, from that inability to locate the survey monument, we actually started a CIP program to create a monument, survey monument book that is now complete as of this year. But it did, this project did start and indicate that we were a little bit lacking in trying to locate and recover some of the monuments that had been lost over the course of many years of construction in town. At a 2014 meeting to perfect the documents between the Napa Valley Lodge and town staff, it was determined that a summary vacation of the right-of-way was needed to perform the lot-line adjustment. During a subsequent title research, more confusing information on the ownership of Madison Street also became clear, more clear. In fact, part of Madison Street appears to be owned by the lands of Yount. So as a result of that, the title company recommended that it would be impractical to pursue a lot-line adjustment for Madison, which is why we're recommending an encroachment permit and agreement in lieu of that lot-line adjustment. We are here this evening to finish up that, this document and give them the summary vacation so that they can then perform the rest of the, the rest of the process they need to do so that we can get the grant deed accomplished. That completes my rather not-so-long story of how we got to this place. And I'm happy to answer questions if you have any.
Questions in the staff report?
Well, I do.
Yeah, Councilwoman Dornbecker?
I do have one. So can you sort of explain to me what the parcel one vacated right-of-way, 9,380 square feet? What does that exactly mean? I mean, does that mean that they are claiming title to it or, yes?
Yeah. So there's a process in the Streets and Highway Code for excess right-of-way that the town possesses that's no longer needed for a Streets and Highway purpose. And so in this case, because the build-out on Washington Street has gone in significantly into what is technically the right-of-way, that portion is vacated, relinquishing the town's right-of-way in that portion. And then a lot-line adjustment is performed once that's deeded over at Napa Valley Lodge. But there are easements reserved in the grant deed and also a water easement deed as well so that there's still a portion for pedestrians and parking and for the drainage that goes through there. So all the existing utility easements and uses will stay the same, but it will just acknowledge the fact that there was a build-out into the Washington right-of-way.
And just to clarify a little bit more, so this piece of Washington Street was actually, as you are probably all familiar, at one time, part of the highway system. When Highway 29 was built, they, Caltrans then gave the property to the county. And when we incorporated it as a town, the county then gave the property to us. So we actually own that piece of the street in fee, which is unusual, really. Most of the time, it is a right-of-way. In this case, it's not. It's actually owned as a part of the town property. So that's why we are recommending tonight to vacate this piece of the property so that the parts that have been constructed and are on our right-of-way are now on their property. And we are then laying off some of the risks that we have right now with the...
I see. Thank you. That's very clear.
And counsel, just in closing, I want to acknowledge the ownership of the Woodside Hotel Group, represented tonight by Tim McGregor, the general manager here of Napa Valley Lodge. Because I have to, I'm going to paraphrase this, because we've all had conversations about how something, when we started the conversation in 2010, seems so simple to correct and get everything lined up, wasn't. But I do want to acknowledge the efforts of the Woodside Group and their team in working with us and cooperatively to try to figure out how to clean this up. Because as we find in many situations in Old Town, where property lines are and where things are built aren't always how they're recorded. So everybody had a mutual shared interest in trying to get it right and then trying to protect the uses. So, I mean, I'm just saying, we hope that this is not going to be the case, but I really do want to acknowledge their team as well as our team working through. And every time we thought we had a closure, it seemed like we ran into a new hurdle. And we're now here with a game plan that they've got a few steps to do and then we can do with your action tonight, the final. So...
Didn't this start when there was the renovation at the point and there was a drainage issue?
Yep.
That was a while ago. Alrighty. So any questions? Member of the public? No? Okay. Action? Anyone want to make a motion?
I'll make the motion that we approve Resolution Number 16-3379, approving the summary street vacation of portions of the right-of-way on Washington Street bordering the Napa Valley Lodge.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Thank you for sitting through the long meeting to get to that brief staff report and brief...
At least it was...
As we did.
Yeah, that's right.
Everything's fair.
Thank you. And thanks to staff for working through, yeah, that is a long time, years, to get through that one little slice of...
It was literally the first thing that landed on my desk when I got here two years ago.
Yeah.
I don't think Sandra could wait to pass it over to my desk.
Yeah.
It's nice to be done.
Great. Thank you.
Maybe we can put the big electric board over there now stating all this.
Message part?
Now that it's on Jeff's desk.
We're going to move quickly to staff informational reports. Do we have any? No?
No.
All right. Council meeting reports. Flood control, I don't think we've, we have met since our last meeting. Upper Valley Waste Management Authority, any critical information?
And they canceled their meeting yesterday.
All right. Quickly then, League of California Cities. We had a release on this, but I'll recognize some developments from the League of California Cities Annual Conference. Vice Mayor and Councilmember Dornbecker and I attended. I was installed to the League statewide executive board to represent the North Bay Division. And Councilmember Dornbecker was appointed by the League president to chair the Community Services Policy Committee, on which she has been serving for several years. So congratulations there. We all attended several speakers ranging in topics from the Prop 64 cannabis regulation...
Cannabis, thank you.
Drone, the use of drones. drone, the use of drones and local governmental regulations, any other highlights that...
Well, I did, I attended a presentation on massage establishments and found that, you know, we have quite a few masseuses and masseurs in our town, but they are not registered. But in other towns that have a problem with massage parlors that are not quite as upscale, let's just say, there are, there are human trafficking conditions and reasons why they do want revocable registration for the businesses that have, that employ anyone that is involved in any of that. So, that was eye-popping, eye-opening. And also, I was, I was appointed by the president to serve on the General, 2016 General Resolutions Committee and in the General Resolutions Committee, there was only one resolution that had been, that had come to the fore to be voted on by the General Assembly. And I was in the committee that referred to the General Assembly after there were many amendments made to it, but it's essentially a safe-driving, vision-zero, meaning looking out forward to having no traffic accidents with bicycles or pedestrians. So, it's all about safety, which we do so very well in our town. So, it was an honor to serve on that committee and watch other people wrangle with amendments and speed, you know, rewriting things and, you know, the most innocuous sentence took hours, but it was, it was very interesting and it was confirmed and it was approved by the General Assembly of the League, so it is something that they will promote.
Well, one of the other things I found interesting, one of the keynote speakers has made a total, a whole business out of basically violating local regulations and without any approvals going into neighborhoods and renovating them, changing, you know, kind of dilapidated streets into pedestrian walkways with bike lanes and everything without any approvals from any jurisdictions. He said, "All you have to do is put on a bright orange vest and you can get away with quite a bit." They would use duct tape to draw bike lanes and repurpose banners from buses to create pedestrian sidewalks. It was really interesting because he's talking to a couple thousand elected officials that were all cringing about the fact that he gets no permits for any of it. Anyway...
They were all meant to be pop-up, but many of them were so popular with the local residents that they went to their town councils and got them approved.
He started in Detroit and was renovating some areas that had been completely neglected, so the intent was certainly admirable and then it continued to grow, he's all over the world now. Napa County League of Governments, again, several of us and town manager attended, hosted by American Canyon, and we had Tim Cromarty, who is the lobbyist for the League of California Cities, as it relates, once again, to Prop 64 cannabis initiative, explaining what the possible and likely impacts of passage will be on local government. So, that was also a continued education on that topic. Reports and announcements, I did want to update folks just very quickly about the Yountville Elementary School Stone Bridge Consolidation Committee, Advisory Committee that I'm on for the Unified School District. We met once again this morning and many folks may have seen the most recent media coverage of progress made. For the last several weeks, we've been talking in great detail about how to merge the two schools onto the one campus here in Yountville. After receiving reports from several consultants and also the Department of Education, the, there was a fairly substantial shift in our focus to Stone Bridge staying on its current campus and being rebuilt away from the fault line and the PG&E gas line that have created an unsafe condition in the current location, that recommendation is being crafted right now with an additional recommendation that the school district and board work with the Yountville community to come up with a strategy to keep Yountville Elementary School open for long-term. And all of that will be crafted and presented to the public on October 25th and then go to the Board of Trustees on November 3rd and followed up by a second meeting with the board on November 17th. I believe those are, 3rd and 17th, those are Thursdays. So, that's the latest on that situation. Any other meetings or announcements from council? I think we have taken care of all of our business for this evening. We will be reconvening at our next regular meeting on Tuesday, November 1st at 6:00 PM. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, good night.